Let us, this council, to keep you first and allow you to direct their paths. In Jesus' name we pray and we believe by faith all we've asked to be done, in Jesus' name, amen.
Good morning, Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Good morning. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Good morning, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning, Council President Protem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, and Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning. Counsel, the minutes are not ready for the October twenty, the October first, twenty twenty-four through December third, twenty twenty-four meetings. This time we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Mr. President, good morning to you.
Good morning.
Good morning to the entire council, it's good to see everybody this morning. Good morning to the entire public, I'd like to start my morning off by acknowledging the Putnam Panthers. If you are unaware of the Putnam Panthers, we are referring to Putnam Middle School. Today they are special guests in the council chambers. And they are under the guise of the Kingdom Gents of Putnam Middle School. These distinguished young men. It's quite simple what they're doing. They're learning about leadership. They're being guided and mentored by their teacher, Mr. Frederick Fardis, who will come up in a minute and give some more detail. As you see, they're also flanked by other young men. These men are in training, will be spending some time in city all day, learning about government leadership. And at this time, I would like to ask, ask this Fardis to come up and give more detail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, to our esteemed mayor, um, and alum of Putnam Middle School. Uh, we saw this as an opportunity to identify areas that we can grow in leadership. Um, myself being raised in Birmingham, Alabama, along with others, wanted the kids to see the products of Birmingham, Alabama, to see another side of Birmingham, Alabama, to see that they have opportunity to be bigger than what their current circumstances are. So we came together to teach them about the simple things in life, about how to dress, about etiquette. The simple, the simplest things is yes, sir, and no, sir, yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am. And to be able to identify resources and opportunities when they come before them. So today was just that first step to show them a bigger light than what they see on a daily basis. And we thank you for having us out here today. Yes, sir, at this time, um, he would like for us to have introductions, we will start with our president.
Good morning, my name is Washeviyan Robinson, I am the president of the Kingdom Gents.
Good morning, my name is James Bennett, and I'm the vice president of Kingdom Gents.
Good morning, my name is Dakota Carter, and I'm the secretary of the Kingdom Gents.
Good morning, my name is Denoyce Tarrant, and I'm the parliamentarian of the Kingdom Gents.
My name is Kamara Lane, and I'm the public speaker of the Kingdom Gents.
Hey, I'm Christian Coleman, I'm a part of the Putnam Gents.
Good morning, I am Zion Miller, and I'm a part of the Putnam Gents.
Good morning, my name is Eric Wood.
Good morning, my name is Deandre Knott.
Good morning, my name is Anoria McCord.
Good morning, my name is Carrie Scott.
Good morning, my name is Jacob Warren, I am a part of the Putnam Kingdom Gents.
Good morning, my name is Jaden Shepard, and I'm a part of the Kingdom Gents.
Andrew. And I would like to introduce you to Andrew. Andrew will also be honored this Sunday as, uh, one of America's top ten teams. He has been nominated, and we do, I, thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Andrew Bauer.
Mr. President, counsel, these young men walk, currently walk the same hallways I walk. Same middle school, same lockers. Believe it or not, some of the same employees are still there. I want to be very clear, if, if Putnam produced me, then I know these young men are in good hands. Thank you.
Good morning, with all protocol already being established, everyone, I want to thank you all for having my awesome gentleman here this morning. Uh, this is our inaugural class of the Kingdom Gents Academy, so, oh, I'm sorry. First and foremost, my name is Dr. Dejran Aham Senior, I am the instructional leader of Putnam Middle School, also known as the Panther Kingdom. So, um, with this being our inaugural class, we have to make sure that we have one more person to be a part of this as well. Mr. Mayor. So. You are officially one of our alumni members of the Kingdom Gents. Here we go. So next time you come, you need to see that pen, alright? Thanks, sir. Alright.
I, I neglected, I'm so sorry, we are accompanied today by our peer helpers, um, they came to observe and also learn as well, so I wanted to make sure I acknowledged them, I apologize. Thank you.
Good to see you all, thank you so much. Y'all getting around, yes?
I believe Counsel Moore wanted to make some comments to the-
Nah, I just, I just wanted to make a quick statement, so I know I see a couple of familiar faces out here, uh, from my time, you know, uh, serving at Hayes K through A school, and so it's good to see y'all, uh, still doing work. Um, I know several years ago, I had an opportunity to go to, uh, Putnam Middle School during a time that they had the Breakfast Club, uh, with, uh, I want to say John Cox. Um, and so it was an opportunity for young men such as yourselves to come in, give breakfast, but also get an encouraging word, and so it's cool to see that there's still something, uh, going on at Putnam to, you know, enrich our young men, so my hats off to you all. Um, the fellows as well as the, uh, men who stand behind them and, and, you know, undergird them, so thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Thank y'all. Thank you. Mr. President and counsel, as these young men leave, um, there's another group of young men I want to acknowledge, um, whose presence is not here today, but we will have them here soon, as well as making sure we find other ways to celebrate them in the community, and that is the Thundering Herd. Huge shout out to Parker High School, six A football champions, well deserved. A huge shout out to Coach Frank Warren and his entire coaching staff and team. Huge shout out to Principal Hudson and the entire administration there. Just a huge kudos, not only to Smithfield, but the entire Parker alumni community, I think a lot of people miss Parker's historical importance in the city of Birmingham, and what they mean to the city of Birmingham as it relates to the first black high school in our city. I'm talking scores of generations of young men and women who walked the halls of Parker High School. And so soon, when Coach Warren and Principal Hudson tell us, we'll have them here before you to give a more proper, um, congrat- congratulations, as well as how we celebrate them out here in the community. Just a note, shout out to Chief Sparks, Cedric Sparks, twofold. Uh, one is that as a parent, uh, father of a child that attends Parker, he engages other fathers, who sons, uh, who play football for Parker, and they have a father's club who engages those young men and athletes. But the other is his son, um, Chance, um, who is a star athlete in his own right, very successful year. As a player and state champion, so kudos to you and the entire Thundering Herd, sir.
And what, what grade is Chance in? I'm sorry. What grade is Chance in?
He's a junior. He'll be back.
Mayor Woodfin, we'll have Parker, we've communicated with Principal Hudson, they'll be here next week.
Yes, sir. So as you all know, the city council, uh, thanks to you all, you approved a sixteen million dollar, budget to support more recruitment and retention for our police officers. One of the public, and you all should know, the next police agility screening, uh, fitness screening will be this Saturday, December fourteenth. Starts at eight AM at the Birmingham Police Academy. Want to encourage residents and non-residents who have any interest in serving in law enforcement, um, alongside Birmingham police officers, please bring your ID, show up on time, and address for physical activity, this is the first step in actually qualifying for the police academy. There will be additional physical fitness screenings on January eleventh and January twenty-fifth for the next academy class. In March, as you know, there's a current class, um, for new recruits that started November nineteenth. If more information for the general public, or for those who want to encourage someone to apply, please dial two zero five, two five four, seventeen twelve, again, that's two zero five, two five four, seventeen twelve. At this time, Mr. President and counsel, I would like to ask Dr. Latricia Ford Diller and the entire Phillips Academy Beta Club to join me at the podium as we acknowledge, um, them and share some of their success stories. I'm going to hand this, um, mic over in a minute to Dr. Ford Diller. And as they come up, I would just like to share that this group of scholars recently attended the Leadership Summit in La Grange, Georgia, and qualified in four, not one, but four competitions. Um, I'm excited to say that they will now advance to the Leadership Summit Nationals in June of twenty twenty-five in Orlando, Florida. And that is to be a big kudos to y'all, congratulations on that. Of our forty-three schools, they're the only Birmingham City School to compete in Georgia, and would be the only BCS school to go to Nationals, so again, congratulations to you. And at this time, I would like Dr. Ford Diller to come give some more information and what they are in store for in June, and how they're going to kick everybody's butt, I'm stepping aside.
Good morning. I would like to say thank you all so much for having us here. Our Beta Club has worked so hard to compete and represent Birmingham City Schools well in all of our competitions. Years ago, we started competing at the state conventions, and we advanced on to the Nationals. This year, we took on the challenge to represent BCS schools at the national lever, level at the Leadership Conference. This was our first year ever attending the Leadership Conference, and we placed in every single category that was hosted at the Leadership Summit. We look forward to continuing to represent Birmingham City Schools very well. The pillars that we represent are character, achievement, leadership, and service. And I'm going to call, um, our four, um, leadership members here to tell you all about the competitions they competed in and to introduce themselves.
Uh, hello, my name is Corlin Perkins, and I competed in the outstanding leadership competition, and I won.
My name is Carson Diller, and I competed in the collaboration connection.
Hi, my name is Kendrick English, and I competed in the lead outside the box.
Good morning, my name is Kelsey Schwartz, and I, uh, I, um, competed in the project proposal convention.
And the rest of the members you see, um, they all were on teams in all of their competitions, and, um, as I stated, they represented BCS well, and we look forward to many more years of representing BCS as a national Beta Club.
Just a note, Mr. President and counsel, Ms. Schwartz is the daughter of Monique Schwartz, team member, and we're proud of you. Proud of all of you all, do your thing in Orlando, look forward to supporting y'all, uh, from near and afar, thank you so much. Mr. President and counsel, there is one more important note, at this time I would like to ask President Weaver, President of the Phi Iota Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Incorporated, to please come forward along with the members of this prestigious, very prestigious chapter. If you were not aware, this chapter is celebrating its twenty-fifth, twenty-five years, its twenty-fifth anniversary, which is a big deal. Uh, today we like to pay tribute to these women of distinction who are celebrating their chapter's twenty-fifth anniversary in service to our community. Dr. O'Quinn and I had some time this morning to kick it with these young ladies. And we want to honor them with this special proclamation that I will read in part. It states, whereas on December eleventh, nineteen ninety-nine, Phi Iota Omega Chapter was chartered in Birmingham, Alabama, with the mission to uplift, empower, and enrich the lives of all residents. And whereas the members of Phi Iota Omega Chapter have demonstrated exceptional commitment and hard work in advancing social justice, educational excellence, and community service. And whereas Phi Iota Omega's chapter's impact and influence have been profound, fostering positive change and unity throughout the city of metropolitan Birmingham. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby proclaim December tenth, twenty twenty-four, as Phi Iota Omega Chapter Day here in Birmingham, and encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing and celebrating Phi Iota Omega's chapter's dedication, leadership, and service to our community, not just for the past twenty-five years, but many, many more decades and years to come. With that, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor Woodfin, to President O'Quinn, and to the council. My name is Ashley Weaver, and I serve as the thirteenth president of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Phi Iota Omega Chapter here in Birmingham, Alabama. As Mayor Woodfin said, we are celebrating twenty-five years of service and dedication to the Birmingham metropolitan community. We are so thankful for everyone who, um, attended this morning's breakfast. Um, we are just looking forward to continuing to serve this city in anything that you want. We are so delighted to have our thirty-seven charter members who had that vision to start a chapter here in Birmingham, and we actually have the pleasure of having our first chapter president, Barbara Franklin. Is she right here? She's gonna, she's mad, to be here with us today, so again, on behalf of our chapter, we just want to say thank you so much for all that you do for our community, and again, we are looking forward to soaring to twenty-five years of more service in our Birmingham community, thank you.
Mr. President and counsel, I owe these ladies an apology. First of all, I, I act like I didn't pledge. Yeah, I gotta be careful. Yeah, I'm a, I'm a part of a non-Hason organization.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah. But in not mind my manners, I act like I didn't learn the Greek alphabet. Or, or how to pronounce words. So ladies, please forgive me. Because it's Phi Iota, and I don't want to get beat up. But I'm very, very proud of all of you, very happy for you, congratulations on twenty-five years of service to our community, and many more years to come, thank you for who you are.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Protem Alexander.
Well, good morning, ladies, I'm so excited to join Mayor Woodfin and the council in welcoming you here today as you really celebrate a momentous occasion, twenty-five years of service to our community. So much work you've done for the citizens of Birmingham and, and within our area, and I'm very proud to call you all as fellow members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. So thank you so much again, just excited to have you here, continue to do the great works that you do in our community, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our, uh, yes, Counsel Smithman.
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor Woodfin, I think everybody, eyes and ears can see, it's, um, raining very heavily. But flooding, um, my sister called me, and she was dropping off my nephew, and there's significant flooding. Um, I know it's all over the city, but she was talking about on the south side, for example, um, saying that, you know, if you have a certain car, you, you'll get stuck. And so I know it's not just in my district, it's touched every district, and I know we've talked about storm water. Um, is, is there like an updated plan on addressing that? Is there an updated plan, are we applying for state grant funding or anything? I think if I remember, Counsel Clark asked for some type of stormwater basin study.
Do you have a particular address you're referring to, intersection? So we can get that situation addressed.
I'll, I'll try to remember it.
Yeah, please, if you can, text it to me real time.
Cause it's by UAB Highlands, but I'll ask her specifically, you know, it's Alpha Green Springs, but I'll ask her.
Related to this topic, I think many of us have had extensive conversation. Um, what I want to do is not misspeak, um, so I'm stepping out in a minute, and I'll be sure to talk to Ms. Katrina Thomas and get an update, so I can give you factual and accurate information where we are with stormwater.
Okay, thank you.
This time I'll read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Madam Clerk, at this time, could we read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, excuse me, yes, sir, the consent agenda starts on page two with items two, three, and four. On page three, items five, six, and seven. Please note on item number five that it was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. On page four, we have items eight and nine. Item eight was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee. On page five, we have items ten, eleven. Uh, we have item twelve, but that item has been requested to be withdrawn by the Office of the City Attorney. On page six, we have items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Please note on item thirteen and fourteen, they were both recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee, and you should have before you a revised version of item number thirteen. It's, you should have the strikeout copies. You should have a copy before you. And it shows the changes in the, uh, wording of the item. On page seven, we have items sixteen and seventeen. On page eight, we have items eighteen and nineteen. On page nine, we have items twenty and twenty-one. Page ten, we have items twenty-two, twenty-three, and also, item twenty-two has also been revised, uh, removing, um, fee one hundred twenty-two thousand sixty-one dollars for the purchase of playground equipment while home apart District Five. So all references to that particular item have been removed, and you should also have a revised copy of item twenty-two. On page eleven, we have items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. On page twelve, we have items twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Page thirteen, we have items thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. On page fourteen, we have items thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. And on page eighteen, we have item forty, and that completes the consent agenda. We do have an addendum.
Okay. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counsel Moore?
Yeah, uh, if the clerk could, um, I know you made some statements regarding item twenty-two, what were those statements again?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, I know, you said that you made some statements, uh, regarding item twenty-two.
There's a revised version of that, that you should have a copy in front of you.
Thank you.
Alright, Protem Alexander.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to pull item fourteen from consent. On page six, I'm sorry.
Yes, page six, item fourteen, off consent. Counselor Smithman?
Um, can we add item forty-one to consent?
Okay, forty-one is the addendum item.
And Chief, is, isn't it F four fifty, okay.
Yes, ma'am, that was, that was a correction made, it should be at F four fifty, AEB.
Alright, thank you.
And I object to the addendum being put on.
Okay.
Only since, only since the public doesn't know what we're doing when we put on addendums, so we need to read them and let the public know that we added something that they are unaware of.
Yes, ma'am, and it was also recommended by Budget and Finance.
Okay. Alright, um, I would like to-
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry, Counselor Abbott, go ahead.
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
Your, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to remove item twenty and twenty-three. District nine is very kindly going to fund our project at Bessia Stell Park, but I'm betting, I'm betting that that might not be so, so, but anyway, I want the-
So item twenty, page nine.
Twenty is on page nine, and twenty-three is on page ten.
Twenty-three, okay.
Thank you.
Alright, and I would like to remove item four on page two. All right. And I would like to remove item four on page two and item eight on page four. Are there any others? Council Tate?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to remove item number six, please.
Item number six is page five. Okay.
What item number was it? I'm sorry.
Uh, item number six, page three.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay. And we don't have any, um, public hearing items marked on the consent agenda. So, um, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Remove second.
All right. I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. So the consent agenda is approved. Uh, let's move to our first item, please.
Our first item is on page two. Item number one, a resolution relative to the application of Privilege Inc. for a lounge retail liquor class one license to be used at Privilege, 2312 First Avenue, North Birmingham. And this is the hearing of our interested parties.
Okay. This, uh, uh, public hearing and I'll pass it off to, uh, okay. Motion? All right. It's been motion and second. Now I'll pass it off to Councilor Tate to conduct the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call the applicant. Is the applicant present? Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Dan Crane, 9609 Parkway East, Birmingham, Alabama.
Please pull the mic down.
Dan Crane, 9609 Parkway East, Birmingham, Alabama, 35215.
Okay. All right, Mr. Crane, you have an application before this body, um, well, liquor application for an establishment that's called Privilege. It's going to be located at 2312 First Avenue North. Um, can you tell us about, um, your venture?
Yes, ma'am. Um, the space located 2312 First Avenue North, uh, will be called Privilege. It is a entertainment space that's designed for networking for professionals, professionals like myself, professionals like you, professionals like the folks behind me. Um, it, it, it's designed with an intimate setting. The layout has an intimate setting similar to that of Paper Dolls. Now, there's booths, there's, um, 16 on the main wall, uh, designed for spa, uh, space for groups to sit down and have intimate talks. Those, uh, sections are similar to that of Adios. Um, what sets this space apart from the, the locations that's quite near this space is that it's a, it's, uh, it's, it's larger, has more seating, and it also has a private, uh, room that's dedicated for, uh, corporate, uh, meetings or, uh, private parties, uh, such as birthday parties and things like that. We, I, I've heard the concerns of, of the, the neighborhood. Uh, I've heard the comments. And for that reason, we've addressed those in the safety plan. Um, one of the notable things that we, we've done is we've applied for the Birmingham Police Surveillance, uh, camera program. Um, and we, we will also, uh, promote that to make it aware to our customers, to make it aware to the community that, uh, we, we do participate in this program as a deterrent for any, uh, criminal activity that may or possibly could occur, if any. Um, we also have, uh, uh, a, uh, police officer, off-duty police officer with a patrol car outside to make sure that, uh, that our patrons, uh, get to their cars safe and there's nothing that could possibly take place, uh, outside our space. Um, furthermore, uh, there, there was, there was a comment about trash. Um, we do, uh, intend to employ a, a cleaning company, which I, I've employed in my other businesses, that will, uh, sweep the area outside. Uh, we do have those cameras outside. There's two cameras in the front. So we don't even have to be there to see the trash. We can look on the cameras. And if there is additional trash that's ours, we can have that, uh, cleaning company out there, uh, as soon as possible. Um, but we intend to, um, be a part of the community, be a positive place for the community, intend to be a place for professionals to network and do some business. Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Crane, I have had an opportunity to review your safety plan. Can you, um, address the body, your hours of operation, your age? Let me kind of go into some, you did talk about a little detail, but, you know, expound on your hours and your age, um, limit to, um, coming to this establishment.
Yes. Uh, so the age limit, again, is professional-driven. Uh, it's 25 and older. Uh, our business hours, again, these, this is one of the comments that was made. So our hours are Tuesday through Sunday, all across the board, 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Okay? And that's one of the things that we also took in consideration when, uh, uh, hearing comments from the community.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak for or against this item?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, there's several people. If you're gonna say something, you can be brief if you want to come up. We've got several people here. I'm Sheila Smoot. I'm a business consultant for attorney Dan Crane in this particular issue and many others. I'm also a licensed real estate agent, residential and commercial, uh, doing business in your city. And I am also a licensed planning and zoning official for the state of Alabama. Uh, so in regard, I've been with Mr. Crane. I've walked the building. We've talked. We've done some things. The concerns I think that I had is that the complainants and the residents of the community are putting and lodging unsubstantiated complaints, Madam Chair. And, um, they are not, this business owner, this attorney, this upstanding citizen, this person who does daily business in your community, um, has not had any, let me repeat, any documented incidents of record. And if he did, he has not been alerted to those. And if there are some concerns, he would be glad to say that. So the business, I've been in, in many of his business, all of his businesses, but in today's capacity, I, I do believe that the commentary that has been made against this particular applicant on this particular business have been out of the realm. He's the only black businessman on that street with this type of business. And there are other businesses that are doing the same thing. Uh, and I hate to say that unfortunately, some of the business owners behind me who also have had this kind of business, who've overflowed on the street, they, we won't call names, but they know who they are. I've been to their businesses. And I think Mr. Crane has gone above and beyond the call of duty for any applicant for this type of business that hasn't even opened yet. And that it's, he's been unfairly targeted, unfortunately, by emotional complainants who may have had, uh, other complaints about what's going on around the area and blaming that particular entity and this particular applicant for that. He has not been affiliated. I want to thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Smoot. Um, those that are here to speak for or against the item, can you, um, line up for me? And you have three minutes to speak. And please speak and tell me why you are here to oppose Privilege to open up.
Council Tate, uh, also remind folks, um, we do have, uh, three minutes per, per each speaker and the time will be displayed on the, the monitors behind us. Thank you.
Okay. State your name and address for the record, please.
Council members, my name is Daniel Christensen. I live at 2412 Second Avenue North and I serve as the president of the Central City Neighborhood Association. Uh, firstly, for context, I wish to, uh, make clear that in the entire time that I have served as a neighborhood officer, this is the first application that has come before us that has received any opposition votes at all. No other, uh, liquor license application has received any, uh, opposition votes up until this point in my experience as a neighborhood officer. What we have is really an issue of trust. Um, that, since the last time that I was before this council, uh, that area of First Avenue North has been relatively calm and quiet for the first time in many months. Uh, and my neighbors who are, have had interactions with the applicant previously have their own reasons not to trust the, uh, what, trust that the, uh, uh, business will remain as they, as it has been presented before you, uh, both at this location and its previous guise as Casanova's, which, uh, the applicant, uh, was involved in.
Mr. Christensen, we're here to talk strictly about Privilege. I, I'm asking everybody to come to this mic to please tell me why you oppose Privilege of opening.
At this point, my, my neighbors do not trust that the maintaining order in this area is, uh, something that, uh, they can count on. And, uh, the previous events that have occurred over, uh, earlier this year, especially around May, uh, indicate that, uh, they need more assurance from the city and from, uh, the applicants that, uh, the, uh, quality of life in the area will remain as it has been since, uh, the businesses in that area that had attracted, uh, issues, uh, have left. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, councilors. My name is Bernie Smith. I live at 2319 First Avenue North, directly across from the Cap, uh, Privilege space. I was, I'm a business owner in the 22, in the 2200 block of Second Avenue North. Um, my concerns are, uh, I think we, Commissioner Tate at the Safety Council meeting, you said you didn't want to hear about other bars in relation to this, um, application. But I think we need to look at Mr. Crane's track record with being a business partner in Casanova and what his relationship is with the Safe Room, another bar at the Watts Tower, where I think you all got emails from me showing videos of gun violence in the last two or three weeks, automatic weapons in the street, shots fired on different occasions, and altercations with BPD. Uh, I'm not sure of his, uh, relationship with that, but I do know that the Safe Room on their Facebook page does promote Privilege. I'm a, I've held six liquor licenses in the city of Birmingham and still hold one. I understand the challenges of Mr. Crane in opening a bar. I owned a bar in the Five Point South Side for 20 years with an outdoor patio in the middle of a neighborhood. I know how hard it is to be a good neighbor with noise, litter, and especially security. My concerns are that's not happening with Mr. Crane's establishment when he was a partner in Casanova. I'm aware of us living downtown. We make sacrifices in noise, fire engines, street traffic, runners, parades. We sign up for that. Someone bringing something into your neighborhood or my neighborhood that is a distraction and creates a bad issue for our neighborhood in a mostly residential block, um, is just something we're all very concerned about in our neighborhood. Thank you for your time. I hope you'll look at Mr. Crane's track record, talk to BPD. I know all the BPD top brass has these videos as well as Mayor Whitfin. So thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lisa Perez and I live at 2319 First Avenue North. My husband and I have called downtown home since 2007, first on Morris Avenue and now on First Avenue North. And I want to thank the city council for hearing the concerns of the neighborhood as you make the decision about this application. And to say, to repeat what Bernie said, living downtown has its challenges and it has its opportunities. And we are happy to support our neighborhood, our city. Um, our concern today is that the business description that we heard at our CCNA meeting is not the same description we heard at city council or at the safety committee. Our first description was described as a lounge with military-trained security. And what we are hearing now is that this is an event center for business professionals. Um, the description changes as our concerns are raised and they continue to change whenever there's a concern. So we really don't know what kind of establishment is going in next to our home. The CCNA has voted to advance many applications for many businesses since we've lived downtown in 2007. It's in our neighborhood. But what we are hearing from this applicant has caused alarm in our community. And again, I thank you for hearing our concerns today.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Evelyn de Barleben. I live at.
Ms. Barleben, can you pull the mic down?
Thank you. My name is Evelyn de Barleben. I live at 2301 First Avenue North. Uh, I'm, I live, uh, across the street from, uh, the area that we're talking about. Um, I signed up to be, uh, uh, for the mayor's, uh, my block. So I, uh, cleaned the, the block area of, right across from there. And, um, I've had to clean up syringes from the previous, uh, uh, area. And, uh, I, I know that we're not supposed to talk about the, uh, bar from before, but I want to talk about, uh, the gentleman Kane, uh, and Mr. Crane. And I've gone to all the meetings and just like the previous speaker said, he's changed what he said each time. Uh, and I, he says now the hours are different from what he said before. And there's nothing that, my understanding, there's nothing that's going to prevent him changing it again from, you know, 12 to 2. And, um, I, I work late. I sometimes walk on the first floor. I saw the, the, when he said that they didn't share with Crew at the, uh, first meeting, I saw that the, the guests would go back and forth between Crew and Casanova. He said, well, he only shared with the, the bar, uh, the, at the other end, uh, one, the, uh, and, you know, I can't see that far down. So I don't know if the participants went farther down or not. But I do know when, when they left it too, they would come behind my building and stay for several hours. They were, uh, there was, uh, one day when I was, I heard yelling and screaming, cussing and everything. I looked out the window. This guy was saying, you know, the elves weren't, they don't leave me. He reached into a car and pulled out what appeared to me a gun and pointed at the gentleman. I bent down. I, you know, and he screamed and yelled for a while and they left. So I've had to pick up syringes. I've had to pick up all kinds of stuff. And, you know, we don't have that anymore, you know? And we didn't have it before those two clubs opened up. So I appreciate your time and I, uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Sabiani Amaya, 25 West, West Oxmoor, Birmingham, Alabama. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of, uh, Privilege, um, as the acting manager. Um, safety order opulence, um, has been a thing that we've gone by for this past couple of months in having to recreate and establish this, uh, this, this new venture. Um, once again, as, uh, Mr. Crane was saying, countless days and hours have been spent on, um, listening, um, to the, uh, community and which we, you know, would give us opportunity to actually, uh, introduce ourselves. Um, being that I'm in a, this is a new venture, uh, with Mr. Crane. Um, we definitely want to, um, turn over a new leaf. Um, I can't speak on behalf of anybody previous to us, but we've heard your concerns. And we definitely want you guys to give us opportunity to, uh, to show you. And, um, also, you know, that we are appealing to the trendsetters and the tastemakers of this community. And we appreciate you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Bruce Parrish. I reside at 4303 Warrington Road in Gunnersville, Alabama. I am here speaking on behalf of the security company that they employed for their concerns that they heard out. We plan on having one off-duty in a squad car police officer outside. We plan on having one security at the door. We have one Roman police officer on the inside, one Roman security officer also on the inside. We'll also have one-person security on the outside roaming the perimeter as well. So, all the concerns that they may have, we will address that. And I've decided not to use military-trained security for this. So, all the security that's on staff will be bar-trained, and they've also worked in these type of establishments before. One in particular is here tonight with me, and he is very well-known in this area, and he has been part of all the bars and clubs in this area. So, if he needs to also speak, he can as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any of my colleagues have any questions for the applicant?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Is Officer Knight here? And as he comes, I know that there have been several concerns about incidents that have taken place, you know, at Casanova. Were there any incidents that are on record?
No, at this time, the application at 2312 First Avenue North, no incidents. What we look for is crimes against people, like assaults, robberies, and homicides, stuff like that. Right now, there are no incidents that would make us deny him as far as opening up. We go off the reports and calls for service. Calls for service are very low at that place. That street gets a lot of calls, but it's not pinpointed to that exact address.
So, phone calls in...
Yes, in the street with loud noise and people getting into it in the street, that's a city street. We can't tie that to a certain business unless we see them coming out, you know? But other than that, we have nothing on paper data to, you know, to refuse him opening up, you know, as far as business compliance in the police department.
Thank you. And is there anybody that would be able to speak to, I guess, just the zoning of this business?
Mr. President, let me pull up the email that we... I think the zone, do we have B2? It's... I'm sorry, the subject property is currently zoned B4. Central visitors, the lounge is at permitted use.
So, it is in permitted use?
Yes, sir.
Got you. Okay. So, as the responsibility of this council, you know, we're responsible for ensuring that business owners are in compliance with our ordinances, with our policies, with, you know, the different zoning requirements that are outlined. And based on, you know, what the police department has stated about incidents, there have been no incidents at the previous location, and obviously, there are no incidents at the current one because he hasn't even had an opportunity to open up. This location is actually zoned for this type of business to reside there. And I'm pretty sure, you know, all of you all know that. That's one of the reasons that I'm pretty sure most folks moved into this area because of the convenience, right? Location, close proximity to, you know, different amenities, restaurants, what Bamboo on Second, which I love. I absolutely love the news there, as well as, you know, even Armor House, right? I had an opportunity to go over there the other night. Great food, great ambiance, but there were speakers outside of the restaurant, right? Playing loud music on the road. But nobody has a problem with that, right? Nobody takes issue with that. We literally just have the Kingdom Jensen here, young men who, you know, are up-and-coming leaders in our city and possibly even business owners. I don't want us to send a message to them that, you know, because they're trying to open up a business in a certain location, that it wouldn't be allowed. It seems to me that, you know, Mr. Crane has done everything that has been asked of him to ensure that he meets the needs and concerns of all of the residents in this area. And so, I would ask that you all would wrap your arms around him, right? Patronize the business. Yeah. Because, again, he has done everything that has been asked of him in terms of presenting a safety plan and meeting the concerns that you all have. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmore. Any other councilors have any comments? Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, you know, the concern. And, you know, as a resident of Birmingham who lives in areas with a lot of behavior that, you know, I don't particularly enjoy being around, I understand the concerns. I do think, you know, Birmingham has a long history of downtown versus the neighborhoods sort of sentiment from many of our residents. And we, you know, I feel like downtown is for everyone and that it's our living room. It's the place we bring our company. And so, we do want to protect the sanctity of downtown and the safety of downtown as, you know, the living room of our entire city, but we want everyone to feel welcome. And I think you all, as, you know, stakeholders and stewards of the downtown and residents of the downtown, have an opportunity to take a more active role in, as, you know, my colleague said, you know, being engaged in the business as an insider. I do feel like some of the evolution in the concept is not dishonest. I mean, I can't say because I don't really know the proprietor like that, but it appears to me that it may have been responding to some of the pushback and feedback. So, the concept is evolving to be more accommodating of the community. And I did hear him say he'd like for you to be a part of the business as, you know, as a user of the business, as a patron of the business. So, I think that's one way to make sure that you know what's going on, you know? Not be on the sidewalk or at your house looking out the window, but actually go into the doors and participate that way. And maybe you do already with some of the other establishments, and it hasn't helped. I can't really say. But I do think, you know, we have a responsibility and an opportunity to, you know, help everyone be a part of our downtown because it is the living room of our city, and it's for all of us. I do feel like we have very clear reasons to deny a liquor license, and I don't know if Attorney King could just quickly review those with us so that we're mindful in this moment of what those are.
Councilor Clark, before Attorney King does, that I need to acknowledge that I do have another speaker to my right. And so, let's, you know, get through the speakers, and then we can talk to Attorney King. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Absalom Martino. I'm at 1376 Wood Road, Memphis, Alabama, 35228. As far as... Y'all right about like location, because I did security in mostly every club, Hampton Ten Roof, Nanofunk, Side Bar, Innisfree. I didn't do... I'm pretty, no, I did every bar in Birmingham. So, location is everything because even before the incident with Hush, they reach out to me. I'm very particular on certain places I do secure. I'm very particular on that. So, location is everything. But I think the new lounge should be opened up and everything with that location. And like I said, I done seen both sides, like the rough side and the good side. I done seen it all. So, and I did a security even out of state, Miami, Las Vegas. I did Celebrity, so I'm familiar with all around, you know, and everything. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Any more speakers from... Any more comments from the council? Hang on, Mrs. Smith.
So, based on past experience, I just want to get our Department of Finance to give their, you know, to assure us that the applicant is in good standing with the city as far as licenses and so on and so forth.
Okay.
And I wouldn't be asking that if it had not been an issue in the past. So...
Chief Mitchell.
Allow us some time to check on that because this is a new business. So, at this point, they would only just need a business license, but I know CFO Bowden will check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Chief Mitchell. Anyone else got comments from the DAs?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm kind of going along the lines of what Councilmore was saying. I'm glad he asked about whether zoning was permitted and whether there were incidents that happened there. And I think the bigger concern for everyone is safety. And I think I want, if that's your concern, I want that to be the focus because we can't discriminate against Mr. Crane because he is a business owner. You know, he hasn't had a business there. There haven't been any incidents. And also, as a council, we can't just discriminate against somebody based off of fear. And I get it about Crew, you know, and I won't talk about Crew. There's a whole lot of reasons for why that didn't work out. But, you know, people, young people, still deserve to have a place to go to. And I think, you know, Councilor Tate has done a great job updating his safety plan. His safety plan is so thorough. She really made sure he had something accurate and not just one page. But, you know, downtown, living in any city, doesn't guarantee that it's going to be quiet, that it's going to be safe. Like, we can't prevent another Crew because honestly, in my district, Five Points South, the... Answered with Hush, for example, they don't feel safe, but they still prevailed against it. And so, you know, I don't want to discriminate against him because if it was like another Ayos or Paper Doll, you know, I can't say for certain all you all would be here because even though that's a different bar. But I say give him a chance. He is a business owner. We still want to boost our economy. But I think we should focus on safety and how we should work on making you all feel safe in your homes because in our districts as well, we have people that hit the floor because they have gunshots flying everywhere. And, you know, that's also hard for us to be like, okay, we have people who can't even leave their homes, but you're also complaining about a business that hasn't even opened. So, you know, I'm here for giving Mr. Crane a chance just because, you know, there aren't any reasons to deny him for this. But I would love to help you all to make sure you feel safe in your homes downtown as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Smith. And Councilor Woods?
Mr. President. I have an update. This staff has an active business license.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to add, I mean, I think, you know, we appreciate greatly residents that are engaged and involved in their community. And definitely can understand some of your thought processes. I know, and I can imagine some of this ripples from some mistakes that happened this summer that involved a different business. And so, here, we have to be fair. We have to be impartial. We have to make decisions based on the actual facts that exist. And Attorney Crane has really been an example of what we want our young men to be, has several businesses throughout the city, gives back to the community, is consistently working to improve and grow. And so, that's, you know, that's something we want to see aspire to. I do understand and appreciate, you know, some of the things that residents in that area may have dealt with firsthand over the summer. I can understand some of those frustrations, but I can't say that, you know, when issues have occurred, those issues have... Those businesses that have violated something have come before this council, and the council has taken action in those situations. And so, I don't see any reason, and I've heard some comments, but actionable as far as the council being able to deny someone an opportunity to do business in the city, I haven't heard anything that rises to that level. And so, you know, I do encourage you guys to communicate if there are issues, if you do see, you know, things, you know, lift those things up. But, you know, at this time, I think it's important to, you know, be fair. You know, Birmingham, we want to really signal and be consistent with, you know, we're open for business. Like, we are a place of opportunity. We want our city center to bustle. We want our districts to bustle. And so, we want to encourage people to go out on that limb, open a business, make those investments in the city. And, you know, we want to be fair and ensure that everybody knows that we won't make decisions arbitrarily. And so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Woods. Protem Alexander?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to echo the sentiments of the councilors that have already spoken. In reading the information that's been shared with us about the safety plan, I just want to make you aware, as a resident of the city of Birmingham, I understand the fear, and you wanted to protect your neighborhood. You want to keep it safe. This particular safety plan is one of the strongest ones that's been presented to us in several businesses that have come before us. I also want to address, I really don't want anyone to feel that if, after I've listened to you and after I've taken into consideration your concerns, and as a business owner, I go back and change that model or I make adjustments to that model, it's not necessarily that you're trying to pull something over or, you know, do something that is not truthful. It's responding and wanting to be a part of the neighborhood. Again, I applaud the work and the diligence that's been done. I think most of the things that we did receive, a statement that had concerns, and most of it spoke to things of the past. And so, I just want us to keep this particular applicant in mind and what has been put forth in front of us for what this particular business will bring to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Protem. Any other councilors? Okay, Councilor Abbott.
Thank you. I certainly understand how the residents feel after what they endured with the last occupants. I think that that's something that is very firmly in all our minds. And the police department is... Was directly involved in the closing down of the last one because of what they were witnessing, so this certainly confirmed. But my 23 years on the council, I've learned one thing. You can't hold a new occupant responsible for what the old occupant did. All you can do is make him conform or her, and the police department will be the one that will be in charge of doing that. This administration is the enforcement arm. The council approves and disapproves the budget and these types of requests, but we cannot hold Mr. Crane responsible for what the Crew people did. And that's just a fact that even if we wanted to, we couldn't. Now, Mr. Crane is responsible for his activities or the activities he allows in his other establishments, and he will be responsible for this one. So, I read the updated safety plan, and I was very impressed. The safety plan is wonderful, but it's a piece of paper. Actually, it's a whole lot of paper. So, what we have to have is, you know, probably a lot of scrutiny on this business because of what's happened in the past. And it's a sad situation, but he chose the location, so he kind of gets the baggage that goes with it. And so, I feel sure that the police will be on top of this one if there are any incidents reported. And I realize people tell me all the time that they report incidents and nobody does anything. I don't think the police department is going to lie down on this one. I really don't. And... But you have to report things, and most people don't understand, if you report an incident and you don't get an incident report, it wasn't reported. So, if you call in and there's no report written and handed to you, it didn't happen. And you can't wink at one business doing things you don't like and then focus on another. These are just facts. These are just facts. So, I'm not finished listening on this, and I did receive the videos and things from, I think it was Casanova, and I assume that that is one of your other bars? Is that Safe Room? Oh, it wasn't very safe, I guess. So, anyway, so just to say that, you know, we are going to be watching, but ultimately, if I see an incident, I have to call the police or I have to call the mayor. You know, we can't fix the things that we approved if they turn out badly, but in this location, this occupant or this applicant has not had a chance to do anything yet, and so we can't hold against him what the last people did, we can just be vigilant, and I feel certain that we will have vigilance from the city on this location because of the past history. So, I just wanted to say, and I did want to understand, a gentleman came up and said he was from West Valley Avenue and he was the acting manager. So, but the business is not open yet, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, and the address of the other place that has the problems is nearby? It's, okay, it's, okay, it's somewhere else, okay. I just was trying to make notes and didn't get that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a question for Mr. Crane. So, it's been mentioned several times that you have another business that has issues. Um, I know that Safe Room is no longer in existence, but I think it's some other name. Uh, are you affiliated with that business?
I do not own the Safe Room.
You did not own Safe Room?
No, I do not. I'm the legal counsel for Safe Room.
Got you.
Yes, sir.
What about the current business that's there now?
I do not own, legal counsel.
So, legal counsel for both of those businesses?
Yes, that's correct.
But not owner?
Not own.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Any other comments? Ms. Smoot, you had another comment?
Thankfully, I was, I'm glad you asked that, Counselor Moore. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just because we're being recorded and Mr. Crane's, um, isn't practicing attorney here, so we just want to be clear that some of the commentary that was made was not substantiated, uh, was not documented. Want to be clear that some of the things that were talked about uh, around the business, the clientele that, uh, this business, uh, has is does not, uh, you know, you can't call anything, you know, things are mass, but I can unequivocally tell you as a patron to all of those businesses um, that he has been affiliated with as counsel, I can unequivocally tell you that after those hours, they clean that place up, that, that clientele does not drop trash, does not walk out with glass, does not have food everywhere. I don't know what establishment they're talking about, but that's never been one affiliated. And you all know that after the doors close and the type of people that walk past who have a right to be on a public street, they may be doing that after the business closed, but I can unequivocally tell you that's not happening. And so from a reputation standpoint, playing on the fears, on the fear, we all know what's been happening. It's just not fair to Mr. Crane's reputation as an upstanding attorney of law in your city doing multiple business, including being a lawyer first. And, uh, but he is unequivocally not associated with the Safe Room, he was legal counsel to both those businesses. And just because, and I'm not going to call names of other businesses and business owners that are here, I know them all. Unequivocally, I can tell you that they've had patrons that have stumbled out and done things, but, you know, as a good upstanding management, as you saw the management, they get a hold of their customer base when people are over drinking. I've been around here for a long time, I've been at all of their businesses. It is very unfair to play on that. I just want to stick to the issue. And the issue is the applicant of record who wants to have a license for this particular business. And, uh, and also on the business owner's side with the other business that was mentioned, that business owner is the, is, is, is that business owner, but this is a new application. And if we could just stick on issue, I would really appreciate that and we would really be honored, uh, uh, that you would, uh, get the folks to do that. Again, let's not get into the fear. We know what's going on. That's a policing issue on a public street, on a public sidewalk, and the new business that just opened a speakeasy is Armor, who has four, four speakers. I went around at night and videoed everything. Had I known that you were accepting that, I would have, I would have showed you what was going on at night at some of the other businesses of record that do not look like my applicant. So, at the end of the day, we just want to stay on, on, on just this one issue and I thank you for keeping us on point. Uh, that'll be it for me. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Ms. Smoot.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
If there are no other speakers from the public or comments, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Crane, I have a few questions from you, and this, it kind of goes off your safety plan and differences that were in the Public Safety Committee. So, one, so the hours that we discussed in the Public Safety Committee were until 2:00 AM, but it looks like that you've changed that to be till 12:00 AM all night, so that you're open, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then if, so, h- how can we be sure that that, I mean, are, are you giving us that your word? Because like Ms. Abbott said, that can be changed, you know, after a license is granted. Are you giving us your word that that, that those are the hours that you will be operating?
Those are the hours that we will be operating.
Okay. Um, and then, thank you for clarifying the, um, I believe it, is it Safe Room?
Yes.
And now it's called something else. Um, uh, that you, that you, and I want to understand this correctly because as Ms. Smoot said, we're on the record, it, you don't, you've never had any ownership in that, correct?
No.
Okay. And then there was also some, some discussion before of that the security would be the same as the Safe Room, but is that, that's not correct, right?
No, it's not correct.
Okay, because the videos that we have seen from the Safe Room show that security company, and I don't know if it's a company or just individuals that are security, allowing people that have fired shots in the street to come back in before police arrived, but that, that is not, so that's, so no, there will be no overlap in security is what I'm asking.
No.
Whatsoever, okay. Um, you know, uh, I think that, I think that we can see the way that this is going to go, and I really do hope that, um, that, that this, that, that that you're able to prove, um, the people that have spoken in opposition of you, um, wrong, because I know that the only thing that everybody wants in this room is to be able to have businesses where we can go, um, and feel safe being in line to get in, feel safe being there, and then feel safe leaving even after you've had a couple of drinks, right? So, I think that that's what everybody wants. And then the, you know, the residents obviously want the same thing, they don't want to walk their dog and be caught up into whatever the, and not correlating this, but I'm saying that whatever that, the vid, the videos we've seen kind of are terrifying a little bit of, you know, people coming and pulling out what seems to be like weapons with bump stocks on them and just shooting rounds at other cars and just crazy behavior that no one, no one wants in this city, no one in this room wants in this city. So, um, I hope that you are able to, um, to, uh, to be, to provide what's, what's in this safety plan.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, Count, Press, Counselor, uh, President O'Quinn.
Yes, um, so I do want to hear from Attorney King, um, on the reasons for a potential denial, but before then, one of the issues, one of the questions that came up in the neighborhood meeting was whether or not you were planning to incorporate HUCA, um, into this establishment, and I don't know that we had ever gotten clarity on that, so just wanted to give you an opportunity to say one way or the other whether who, the, the establishment privilege was going to incorporate HUCA, HUCA as a component of its services.
Before he answers, I would like to know, is the HUCA, uh, having HUCA in your establishment, does that reflect on this particular application or does it have some meaning to the application that's before us?
Uh, it's Attorney Bernard here, because you have to be zon, it has, the, the establishment has to be outfield.
And we have a B4 zoning that's already been established, correct?
Yes. Um, Attorney Bernard is here to speak to that.
Hi, Julie Bernard, I serve as Assistant City Attorney in the Office of, um, the City Attorney. And although HUCA is not directly related to alcohol license, there's a lot of misunderstanding about HUCA. HUCA is regulated under the city's smoking ordinance, it is not allowed unless you have very specific requirements, and there are some requirements in the tech code if you allow smoking inside an establishment that have to be met as far as ventilation. So, just somebody saying we're going to have HUCA's is not allowed unless they meet the requirements of the smoking ordinance.
Okay, thanks, so I understand your question, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Crane, can you respond?
There's no, the, the, first of all, the space is ventilated for that type of, uh, environment, however, there's no, no decision been made as it relates to HUCA's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crane. Um, any other questions? Counselor Clark?
This question is also for Mr. Crane. Um, since we're talking about features of the, the new business, will you have food service?
No.
Any level of food service?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Will, will you be able to order from neighboring places?
Yes, uh, I believe that there's a, a food truck that I see constantly outside of Aldios. Um, I've seen people from Paper Doll walk down there, uh, from what I saw.
But you would allow people to consume food that was ordered from another place or you don't, you haven't thought it through?
I don't, I haven't made that determination. Um, we don't sell it, I don't want anything that we don't sell inside.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, that would be a trash contributing thing, um, in my opinion, if, if we don't, we don't sell it, it's not inside.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Clark. Any other questions? Uh, I'm going to, uh, close the public speakers, I'm going to turn this over, uh, to Attorney King.
Thank you.
She, she spoke earlier. So, would you like to hear from her again, Counselor Abbott? Okay, ma'am, Ms. Martha Latem. Make a rule to suspend a rule, and you have three minutes.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify one thing, and I appreciate you letting me, uh, speak. Uh, what I wanted to say was, uh, that Mr. Crane, uh, was owner of Casanova, which was in the, the, uh, place that, that Neil Privilege is going to be, and that's our concern. Everybody, of course, is fearful of certain things happening, but just like you said, you can't just not give somebody licenses because of fear. Just like Daniel said, we're worried more about trust because we have worked with him before as an owner, and he was not, uh, worried as so much at the time when we had our meeting. We, we brought up our, our concerns to him at the time, and he either said he didn't have anything to do with it, or he backed off from saying, when, when, when he did say, well, that was concern, that's why I stopped doing stuff. So, I just wanted to clarify the fact that it's not just fear, it's actually trust that we're worried about. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, you're welcome. Um, I, you know, before I turn it over to Attorney King, I've heard, you know, a lot up here today, we've heard, you know, some great questions, some great responses, um, you know, really want to reflect the record that, um, the Department of, this Officer City Attorney and the compliance team work very, very, very great together, um, traveling issues of establishments that we all are aware of that have been problems. Um, you know, I live in North Birmingham, we had a, a mass shooting and we dived right into that um, establishment. I think I heard somebody reference this, this, um, space as an, as an event center. It's not an event center. Um, and again, we've heard some, some very great, you know, people raise some great concern here, still, you know, we've seen the videos. We have a permitless carry law in this state, in the state of Alabama, which means that people that are probably carrying firearms, that shouldn't be carrying firearms. And so I would highly recommend, and that's, that's all over this country, the legislative session starts in February. And really talk to your legislators about how do we pass laws around common sense gun laws. And I think that's where a lot of people need to start. Um, you know, in Montgomery, because we saw, as Counselor Abbott said, we saw the videos, and it's unfortunate that we are here in this country, and it's just not in Birmingham, that's all over the place. I mean, I've been to DC, I've been to New York, I've seen people, you know, walking around with guns in there, not even in a holster where they can, you know, I've seen people with glocks that don't even have a safety on it that you can shoot, but I just highly, would highly recommend, you know, people to start with their legislators when the session began to talk about how do we pass common sense gun law in the state of Alabama. And, uh, my colleagues have said a lot, I'm going to yield the floor and I'm going to turn it over to Attorney King.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. There are seven grounds under Alabama State Code, Section 28, 16, in considering the granting or denial of a liquor license application. The first is the creation of a nuisance, the second is circumstances clearly detrimental to or which would adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the adjacent residential neighborhoods. Third, a violation of applicable zoning restrictions. Fourth, an individual applying for the license has a prior conviction involving the use of alcohol or a controlled substance. Fifth, the proximity of the business to a school or childcare facility. Sixth, traffic congestion, and seven, any other reason that poses a risk.
Thank you, Attorney King. I call for the vote.
All right, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that was Counselor Williams and Counsel President O'Quinn.
Yes. All right, that item passes. Next item, please.
The next item will be, is also on page two, item number four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Central Alabama Redevelopment Alliance in an amount not to exceed $100,000, under which Central Alabama Redevelopment Alliance will provide services to the city through the implementation of its gun safety initiative to enhance community safety by providing education and resources for the safe storage of firearms in the city of Birmingham. The gun safety initiative will connect community members with effective storage solutions and resources, including providing wire locks, gun safes, and storage boxes at no cost to the public, as well as providing demonstrations led by trained firearm specialists to better ensure that firearms are stored responsibly and safely, and facilitating connections between residents and federal firearms licensee premises for secure storage options, especially for families affected by chronic health conditions.
Move the item. Um, so, wanted to pull this off the concerned agenda just simply because, um, I, I don't think we talk about I don't think we talk about safe firearm storage often enough. So, you know, this, this initiative is, is really all about educating the public, a, a public that, where firearms ownership is, you know, part of our, our culture. But most folks who own a firearm, it's been my experience that they don't give equal thought to how to safe, safely store that firearm when it's not on their person. And under no circumstances is between the seat cushions of the couch, a ever inappropriate place to store a firearm. So this initiative is really all about teaching folks, you know, different methods of storage, and to get them thinking about in their home environment, in their automobile, in their office, what the different options that are available to them to, to, to make sure that the firearm is, is secure and available for, to them whenever they need it, so. Just wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about that. Councilor Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to just compliment you on this item. It's something that I wouldn't have ever thought of, that the council could be involved in. But, you know, they say that thieves, when they break in your car, the first two places they look are for your gun, which will either be under the car seat or in the glove compartment. And then if they come to your home, they're either going to find your gun in, in the seat cushions of the sofa, which is brilliant. And I attended a funeral for a two-year-old that found one of those guns in the seat cushions. And it was very sad. And the other place they look is under your bed mattress. So, you know, if you've got a gun, those aren't really good places to store them, but people do it all the time because they think they won't be a victim. And after you've been to even one funeral for a child who shot himself with the parent's gun in the sofa cushions, just one will make you think about this for the rest of your life. So, you know, and I'm sure the parent probably thinks about it after, after it's over. But I, I, I come, I, I'm impressed with this item.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
All right. All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Next item, please.
The next item is, is on page three. Item number six. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with Green Lightning Realty USA Birmingham LLC in an amount not to exceed $167,245, under which Green Lightning Realty USA Birmingham LLC will provide services to the city by implementing a project to develop a 35 to 40 unit residential development in the Druid Hills area, with at least 10% of the units to be reserved for providing housing for qualifying residents of the city of Birmingham at or below 100% of the area median income.
All right. Councilor Tate, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, I, I really just wanted to just elevate the work of the community development and the administration on this project. This is one of my opera projects, and just, just highlighting that District Nine is on the move, so we got some, that retainer wall that's on Free Shuttlesworth. They're going to be doing these units, you know, up there, so this is going to be a great project for the residents of District Nine. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Next item is item number eight.
Okay, item number eight is on page four. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city and Jones Valley Urban Farm doing business as Jones Valley Teaching Farm in an amount not to exceed $250,000, under which Jones Valley Urban Farm doing business as Jones Valley Teaching Farm will provide services to the city by implementing its Food is Our Foundation Youth Led Systems Change Project to expand the Jones Valley Teaching Farm's proven food-based model, Good School Food, to an additional 3,700 students in the Birmingham City Schools, Jackson Olend feeder pattern, by building controlled environment agriculture learning labs at eight schools, by doubling the number of paid high school interns from 10 to 20, thereby creating pathways for Birmingham City Schools, youth, and graduates to achieve economic mobility through paid work-based learning and exposure to career and higher education pathways, and by increasing collaboration and organizational capacity and resources to align top-performing nonprofit partners to support the district-wide alignment of food, technology, and pathways-based education.
Councilor Smithman and Councilor Moore. Any discussion of this item? Council Clark?
Just want to say, I'm really delighted to see this great work expand to students in Western Birmingham. And I'm just really excited. That's it.
Okay, great. Council Moore? No? Yeah?
I was just going to say, what's up to Fernando?
Councilor Abbott?
So, so I think we heard yesterday that they were going to be doing hydroponics in these schools, which my father-in-law did, where you put the fish in the water.
Aquaponics.
Yeah, aquaponics.
Yeah.
Hydroponics has no fish. Okay, but anyway, they're going to have, the fish, the fish provide the nutrients in the water that the, that the plants are growing in, and it's, it's very interesting. It's an interesting concept. I've never met anybody who ate the fish afterwards, but then, you know, somebody's eating the vegetables, so.
Right.
But it's interesting.
Yeah.
And I'm excited that they're doing it. I mean, that Jones Valley Urban Farm has been growing and expanding all these years in Birmingham, you know, starting out on two little vacant lots on 10th Avenue, and growing to what they are today, so. It's very impressive. Makes you want to go back to high school, so you can get in there.
All right, Patricia Alexander?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I too want to echo just the delight in the work that is done by Jones Valley Teaching Farm and all of the people that make this such a success. This, my first kno- knowledge of this was when serving on the school board. I believe you had the farm over at Woodlawn High School. Council Abbott has told us that it started out, actually, on the South Side, they're on 10th Avenue. And so look where we've grown and what's going on, and I'm just excited. We had a delicious meal and opportunity to go over there at one time, so I appreciate that. And when I pass by, especially in the summertime, and I see all the work that's going on outside, and I'm thinking, just so delightful. I think about, you know, at one time, the only way we were fed was from the ground and on our own farms and our own land. And so I just thank you for bringing this to our children and to the citizens of Birmingham. Thank you so much, thank you.
Yes. Ms. Story, could you please come to the mic? Yeah. Look, don't act, don't act like you're shy. I know you're not.
I, I just want to say something real quickly. Hello to T. Marie King, and I do see one of my Carver students back there, Jacob. Hi, Jacob.
So Jones Valley Teaching Farm has been growing by leaps and bounds. Tell us how many employees you guys currently employ? And what this expansion to the West Side, how many schools it's going to add to the, the system? And new employees, interns, all of that?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Y'all have been such incredible support to us as we continue to elevate what it means to grow our own food, cook our own food, and then share that food with our larger community. That's what our foundation is. We believe that by instilling that in young people, specifically in Birmingham City Schools, we're creating the next leaders, that will elevate that at all of the decision-making tables. And that is true survival. So we cannot forget how important food is to our survival. And I think sometimes we forget to, to include that. So I just want to say that. Have to acknowledge, we've got almost probably 75%, half, 50% of our staff, if they wouldn't mind standing up, please. Okay, thank you, I wasn't going to let y'all out of that. Thank, okay. So we have grown since I joined, I think it was back in 2015. We had maybe six full-time folks, and today we have 33 full-time folks. Our budget was 900,000, and we're now at 3.4%. 30% of our entire full-time staff are all graduates of Birmingham City Schools, specifically Woodlawn High School. Thank you, Councilor Moore. It's about organizational change in addition to all that we provide in the school system, right? It's about how do we, as a nonprofit, reflect the change that we want to see in the world? And I think that we've had to focus primarily on that, as well as the program delivery. And so we have been asked, I think the, the main question I'm asked anywhere I go, is where are you going next? And West Side always is at the top of that list, because we have been on the East Side for quite some time. And I know there's variations of East Side and West Side. But our goal is to reach all 20,000 students in Birmingham City Schools. We're not stopping just with this next feeder pattern. Our belief is that when we build out the solution between elementary all the way to high school, so we look at feeder patterns specifically, so that kids understand this, it is part of their daily life, no matter what, right? This is not extraordinary, this is due to all of us. This is part of, who, they need to see this as part of their everyday life. So we're headed to Jackson Olend's feeder pattern, that's eight total schools. And that feeder pattern, that'll get us to 3,000 additional children, that's 40%. We will then have 40% of the 20,000 total. And then our hope is to continue to identify those feeder patterns that we can start moving into as we grow. Obviously, that takes funding, and that takes a lot of initiative to, to continue to grow in the way that we have. But we're excited. So we are going to use hydroponics and aquaponics as part of that. We're leveraging, you got it, you got it. And we're leveraging national partnerships. We also believe that we cannot do this alone. So we are bringing in national partnerships. We just leveraged Food Corps. We're also leveraging a national organization called New York Sun Works to help us with the educational delivery. Our hope is to then also expand our internship program, led by T. Marie King, to increase that to 20 paid high school employees. So in addition to the 33, we have 11 additional part-time employees, which all are interns. So we are indeed growing. We are so thankful for this opportunity. The Birmingham Board of Education just approved the other half of that infrastructure. So we are now ready to go and move into all of these new classrooms, so.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I just want to say one thing.
Council Moore?
Amanda, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Please note my abstention. All right, thank you, that item passes. All right, next item.
Okay, the next item is on page five, which is item 12. I just wanted to remind everyone that that item was requested to be withdrawn by the Office of the City Attorney. Next is i- on page six, is item, item number 14. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents required for the city to complete a grant with the Alabama Department of Transportation for grant funding from ALDOT's FY 2025 Rebuild Alabama Act Annual Grant Program to repave Lakeshore Parkway from West Oxmo Road to Industrial Drive, Tom Martin Drive in the city of Birmingham, with a total grant not to exceed $350,000, with $100,000 matching funds required by the city, and authorizing the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such other documents as are appropriate and necessary in accordance with the terms of the grant. A motion, please.
That was Council Williams and Councilor Smithman. Questions?
Yes, Counselor, excuse me, Mr. President. I did ask for this item to be pulled for consent, and it's mainly for public knowledge. I just wanted to be sure that the residents, there's often been questions and comments and calls in the D seven office about this particular stretch of Lakeshore Parkway. So we're just very excited to see this grant and the application for it, and the, just the improvement of the quality of life for people that are having to travel back and forth that stretch of pavement in the district. So thank you very much.
All right. Council Clark?
Thank you. I'm in support of this item, but I do want to just raise up my concerns for the any and all language that appears in a lot of our grant applications. This one does not concern me as much as some of the really large ones, where if the grant funds are awarded, nothing ever has to come back to council. So I just want to say that that's a pet issue of mine, so the more I see it, the more I'll talk about it. So that's just the way it is, thank you.
Right. So just to, to read, it, it's the, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute, your concern is, is noted. Council Clark?
Thank you. So to be clear, this is just to apply and not to do anything related to the grant? Can somebody answer that?
Yes, this is just to apply. If we award the grant, that will come back before the council for implementation.
Okay. So when it says any and all, that's only related to the application? Okay. It would be more clear if it says to complete a grant application, instead of to complete a grant. Because when I think of completing a grant, I think of applying, receiving, and expending the implementation as well. So it would just be more clear, and, and we don't have to mince words. I think the intent that's coming out in the public forum is good, but I think it could be slightly more clear, that it's complete a grant application.
There's two of us.
Thank you, though, for the intent being clarified. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. I, I appreciate the, seeking the clarity, but I do want to not minimize the fact that we are excited to see this grant application that will be a game changer for people that travel that particular roadway. So thank you all. Thank you.
Okay. We are ready for the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item is approved. Next item, please.
Okay, the next item will be item number 20. It is on page nine. A resolution accept, accepting the lump sum proposal of Giffen Recreation, Inc., Pelham, Alabama, in the amount of $151,510 for installation and purchase of supplies and equipment at Betsy Estelle Park, District Three, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with vendors using American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to provide related equipment at the locations in accordance with the terms of quote number Q24-1250, based upon pricing per source well contract number and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Giffen Recreation, Inc., substantially the form, form contained within the proposal documents, and in accordance with said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract does not exceed the appropriation. And I need a motion, please.
I'm of approval.
That was Counselor Abbott and- That was Councilor Abbott and Pro Tim Alexander. No, or Tate. All right. Okay, um, discussion on this item, Council Abbott.
Yeah. Um, one thing I wanted to take this off, so that the residents of the neighborhoods affected would know about it. Um, but there are too many decimals in the number in this item, and I'm sure that's just a typo. But, down at the bottom, it says District Nine is funding this for me, and that is so sweet. I just never knew. I just not, you know, Dr. O'Quinn tried to do that, and what they wouldn't let him. So I just wanted to, um, ask, ask if this is supposed to have a three where the nine is?
Yes, ma'am, it's supposed to be a three.
Okay, so we're gonna fix that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Sure, the clerk's office will make note of that.
Okay, thank you. And then the neighborhood has been trying to get someone to show them the plan for about six months, and we haven't been successful so far. So yesterday, at the ribbon cutting for the Highland Park Racket Club, I saw Ms. Bennett, and she said that the contractor who's going to do the work could come and do a presentation. And I just wanted to be sure that y'all were okay with us contracting the contractor to ask him or her to come make a presentation of the plan at the neighborhood meeting, because neighborhoods should see these plans before we approve the design and the funding, to be sure that it's what they were asking for. And I'm sure it must be, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be fun, but we, we have a person who works for United Ability, used to be United Cerebral Policy, who lives in the neighborhood and attends every single neighborhood meeting and wants to know where those plans are, and wants to see what's on them. So, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Sparks, do we have permission to contact the vendor to get them to the neighborhood meeting, or do you want to do that?
If, if you have already spoken to Director Bennett, because she reports to a separate board, I think that that's improper protocol to do, make sure that she's okay with public board.
Just wanted to make sure, because we provide all the money.
It's, it's parking rest property.
And the money is very important. And there's another item here, twenty-three, that's the, the same thing. And we don't know who Play Power is and what they're doing either. So, maybe the Giffen people can tell us what the Play Power people are doing, because they're located in Dallas, Texas. So, that's all. Just wanted to get those corrections made and let the neighborhood know that the money is finally in place. Thank you.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. That item is approved. Next item, please. Item twenty-three.
Okay, the next item is item number twenty-three. It is on page ten. A resolution accepting the lump sum proposal of Play Power LT Farmington, Inc., Dallas, Texas, in the amount of two hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred forty-six dollars for the purchase of playground equipment at Bessie Estelle Park, District Three, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with vendor using American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to provide related equipment at the locations in accordance with the terms of quote numbers Q two four dash one two four nine, based upon pricing per south source well contract number zero one zero five two one dash LTS dash four, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Play Power LT Farmington, Inc., and substantially the form contained within the proposed, proposal documents, and, and in accordance with said proposal, providing that the total compensation payable upon, payable under the contract does not exceed the appropriation.
I move approval.
That was Council Abbott and Council Williams. Any discussion on this item, Councilor Abbott?
No, this one's good.
Okay. We're, we're good to go.
All in favor, let it be known by saying, sorry, all in favor, and try this again. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Item twenty-three is approved.
The next item is our addendum. Item number forty-one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement in an amount not to exceed one million, seven hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars between the City of Birmingham and Professional Ambulance Sales and Service LLC, doing business as serves, through helping governments across the country buy. Uh, and that'd be HGAC by contract number AM ten dash twenty-three, through a cooperative purchasing program authorized by the State of Alabama Department of Examiners of Public Accounts for the purchase of five twenty twenty-five Ford F, these will be four fifty AEV Trauma Hawk ten series modular vehicles used by emergency responders. Motion.
I move approval.
That was. Council Williams and Council Smithman. Any discussion of this item?
Mr. President?
It's Council Abbott.
Yeah, I did want to say that we learned yesterday that these, these vehicles, the reason there's five of them and they cost almost two million dollars is because they come, already fit up as ambulances, and they have everything in them. The, the box on the back of the truck is full of equipment, and so it's everything. It's not just the trucks. And, uh, we learned that at the meeting yesterday, which I think is significant, because I thought, boy, those are expensive Ford, Ford, F four fifties. But they're expensive because they're fit up completely. And when the truck wears out, they can take the box off the back and put it on a new truck. Isn't that nice? I'm sure we will, because we want to save money. So who, who will be using these? The first responders, EMS?
This is for Birmingham Fire and Rescue.
Okay, Fire and Rescue, okay. Cool.
Yes, Council Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for the administration on this. Um, you know, I see that we're buying these fully equipped and outfitted. Um, and in the past, I've asked that we do that for Birmingham Police Department, so that our police department's not waiting over a year on our vehicles to be equipped and outfitted. So does this mean that we have an inroad now of doing this for BPD? Great. Glad we finally there. Seven years later.
Could be twenty-three.
Okay. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. That item is approved. That brings us to our, um, announcements.
Speakers. Announcements, speakers?
We usually do the council announcements first.
That poor guy's been waiting a long time.
But I, I see Mr. Jenkins roaming around here, so I, I'm, I'm gonna recognize him. Council Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, neighborhood meetings tonight, uh, well, let me start with last night. Had a great time with the Ensley Highlands neighborhood at the Handsome Brute. Um, a great food, uh, provided by one of the residents who can really throw down. So, that was really fun. Good fellowship. Tonight, we'll be at Bellevue Heights for their holiday gathering, happening at the Heights Event Center at six PM. And then this Friday, we've got a doubleheader with, uh, the Rising West Princeton Neighborhood having their holiday social at the, um, at the center, at the Rising West Princeton CDC office. And then the Tuxedo Neighborhood hosting theirs at the Holy Family Parish Hall. So, um, neighbors, come out and join the festive season with your neighbors. And of course, can't, um, can't let another opportunity to shout out the Thundering Herd go by. Uh, Chief Sparks was representing Sunday with his purple. Uh, so it's a herd nation in Birmingham this week. Um, the Alabama Jazz Hall of Fame will host a special night celebrating Ensley Jazz icon Jose Carr with a screening of his documentary, uh, film called So You Say You Play Jazz. That's gonna happen. It's a free event, but you have to, uh, get the tickets from Eventbrite, and it's already sold out. But it's happening, uh, at six PM on Friday, um, with the reception following at seven. And if you've already grabbed your ticket, be sure to show up, because you kept me from getting one. Uh, you can get more information from jazzhall.com/events. And, uh, the match is set up. My alma mater, Georgia Tech, from the Atlantic Coast Conference, will take on Vanderbilt from the Southeastern Conference in the Eighteenth Birmingham Bowl on Friday, December twenty-seventh, at Protective Stadium. So I look forward to welcoming my fellow Yellow Jackets to the Magic City. Uh, that concludes my remarks, and thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Clark. Council Moore?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Community Development Committee meeting will take place next Tuesday, December seventeenth, at two PM in council chambers. All items must be submitted by Thursday, December twelfth, at four PM to Terry Chapman, um, at terry.chapman@birminghamal.gov. GASP, uh, will be having their GASP Christmas Extravaganza, uh, taking place this Friday, uh, December thirteenth, from six PM to eight PM at New Start Covenant of Grace, located at twenty-eight seventy-three Forty-first Street, uh, Forty-first Avenue North. Uh, so again, if you would like to attend the GASP, uh, Christmas Extravaganza, please be there or be square Friday, December thirteenth, at six PM to eight PM. Um, we have the Eastern Toys Giveaway Event that will take place on Saturday, December the fourteenth, from eleven AM to one PM at the Southern Museum of Flight. Uh, they're gonna be giving away Christmas toys, so, uh, come check that out. Uh, the Brownsville Heights Community will also be having their, or neighborhood would also be having their Christmas party, uh, that will take place on Monday, December the sixteenth, at four PM, at the Brownsville Heights Community Center. Uh, we also have the Kilo Springs Neighborhood that will be having their Christmas party on Saturday, December the fourteenth, at six PM at the East Pinson Valley Rec Center. Um, hopefully you have already RSVP'd. If not, uh, catch them next year. And last but not least, we have the District Four Holiday Party, uh, that will be taking place on Thursday, December the nineteenth, from five to eight PM at the Shield Center. Uh, that's thirty-nine sixty-nine Fourteenth Avenue North. Um, it's a free event. Uh, music will be provided by DJ the CJ, DJ CJ the Stick Man, uh, as well as a special performance by Dominique Posey. And so, uh, if you are in District Four, we would love for you to come out, uh, and enjoy this free event. And that concludes my announcements.
All right. Thank you, Council Moore. Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, December eleventh, at three thirty PM in the council chambers. So, um, it is three thirty. We have three vacancies on the zoning board of adjustment, and two vacancies on the Birmingham Planning Commission. We are still looking for resumes. We'd like for them to be received by December twelfth to valerie dot abbott at birminghamal.gov. But, gosh, you know, we need, we need people, and we would like for there to be representatives from across the entire city. But if there aren't, they'll all be from my district. And I'm just kidding about that. But we really do need widespread representation. So if you have people that you know that, you know, can attend a meeting and show up every time, because attendance is a requirement of these committees, we cannot conduct city business without a quorum. So, um, it's very important, but, but needed. Um, there are no neighborhood association meetings this week, but yesterday I attended a ribbon cutting at the Highland Racket Club, where we have just renovated the clay courts. Many people do not know that we have clay tennis courts in Birmingham, but we do. And they have been in the past a big source of revenue for the city because of tournaments that would come here. And now that we fixed the courts, maybe the tournaments will come back, because they've left, because we let them get kind of sad. But they're back, and they're, the place was packed with people who were excited about having this back in Birmingham and first class. And I wanted to thank the Park and Recreation Board, and also the city, because everybody had to pitch in together to make it happen. Um, but there are a lot of happy tennis players and wannabes, and you can go there and take lessons, and they want more young people. And, uh, and they're working on teaching children from the schools. They're bringing them over there to teach them how to play tennis on clay courts, first class. Um, so if, uh, this is on back to the city, if you have concerns or issues that you see while you're out driving around, or walking, or cycling, or skating, or any of those other means of transportation, call three one one, or download the My BM three one one app. So you can attach photographs and write up your own description of what the problem is, to get it, make sure it gets fixed. So the app is free at the Play Store or the Apple Store. And last but not least, we're asking all residents of our district to continue to visit our website for updates on other items that we don't have time to mention up here in our three minutes. And, um, that is www.bhamdistrictthree.com. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Abbott. Council Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, South Tisville Neighborhood, uh, will have their holiday social tonight at five thirty PM at Oak Street Health, located at six three three Tuscaloosa Avenue, uh, right by Princeton Hospital. Arlington West End will also have theirs tonight at six PM at the West End Library. Um, both will have food. Uh, Navigate Affordable Housing will have their holiday party, uh, tomorrow from three thirty to four thirty PM at the Mark Steel Building. Woodland Park will have their holiday social on Thursday from four to six PM at the Arlington House. And then Harmony and Heritage will have their holiday brunch on Saturday, sorry, at ten AM at the Arlington House as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Pro Tim Alexander.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These are our announcements for District Seven. I want to start by thanking, uh, two of our neighborhoods that have already had their holiday gatherings. The Brownsville Community came together last week, and they celebrated their holiday event with several neighborhoods within D seven, West and East Brownsville, as well as Roosevelt and Grisilla. So I want to thank Ms. Cook Bibb and the other neighborhood presidents who got together and had the idea to come in together to have their event. It was a very well-attended event, and we had a great time. Also wanted to thank the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association. We attended their holiday event on Friday. Good food, good fellowship, just a great time. So, um, it, and really, these events are meant to try to get our residents out to join the Neighborhood Association. So if you haven't done so this year, please look to next year to doing that. Uh, coming up the rest of the week, we do have some other holiday events that I'll mention later, but more importantly, today, we will have the Government Affairs Administration Committee meeting. It's at two PM in the council chambers. Our agenda includes, uh, we will be giving an update on the number of applicants that we had for the municipal court judges. That application did end on Friday, December sixth. So we'll be giving the committee members an update on that and plans for those interviews. So that's at two o'clock in council chambers. Also today, Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Oxmoor Valley or the Sand Ridge area. Thursday, December twelfth, Bulk Trash and Brush Pickup is scheduled for Jermania Park South. On Friday, December thirteenth, we'll have our next holiday social that will be hosted by the Industrial Center Neighborhood. That'll be at seven PM at the Mary Door Center. That's on Friday at seven PM. And then on Saturday, the Tarpley City Neighborhood will have their holiday social. That'll be at three PM at, uh, Mount Olive Baptist Church. So, with all of these holiday events, we'll probably have to wheel me back in here in the wheelbarrow in, uh, January from all this good food and good eating. Uh, also want to make just residents in D seven aware, we have two holiday events that will include giveaways, toys, coats, other opportunities. Um, the D seven office is partnering with the Southwest Holiday Festival. That will include a parade at one o'clock on Saturday, the fourteenth. So please come out and join the Southwest Holiday Festival. So please come out and join the Southwest Holiday Festival, and let's just have a great experience for all of our families. Also, on Saturday, the 14th, we're paddling with the men of Powderly. They will be having a toy drive, free coats and toy giveaway that starts from 11:00 AM, planned to end at 2:00 PM. That'll be in the parking lot there at First Baptist Church, Powderly, at 2801 Dawson Avenue. We're very grateful to both of these groups for spearheading these events and great to join them with that collaborative effort. And also, on Saturday, the Jermania Park Christmas Celebration will be held from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. That's at the South Park Baptist Church, 2341 Pearson Avenue. For more information, please contact the neighborhood president, Ms. Gibson, at 205-317-0725. Then the end-out, Monday, December 16th, we have Brush Trash and Brush Pickup for the Riley Neighborhood. I do, at this time, councilors, I would like to ask you, if you would allow me to ask for unanimous consent. We did have the death of a member in our District 7 community, Mr. Wilbert Joe Senior. Mr. Joe was 95 years old, had been just a constant member in the community and was a member of the West End Hills Baptist Church. So I'd like to call for unanimous consent for resolution.
Second.
And now the resolution of 7:00.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you very much. I know his family would be very appreciative of that. And I do just want to mention the passing of a former coworker here or member of the staff for the city of Birmingham, and that's Mr. Mitchell J. Smith. He was an internal auditor. I believe Mitch had retired. Just, just a great individual. This was a treat to always work with whenever we encountered him in the hallway. And so I do just want to offer condolences to Mr. Smith's family, his wife, Sonia Grant Smith, their children. And those services for him will be Saturday, December 14th, at 12:30 at First Baptist Church, Kingston. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Pro Tem Alexander. Councilor Williams.
Thank you. Roebuck Springs Neighborhood will be having their regularly scheduled meeting on Thursday, December the 12th, at 7:00 PM at New Beginnings Church. And Economic Development Tourism Committee will be meeting Tuesday, December 17th, at 11:30 in the council chambers. If you could have all your submissions to indiabailey@india.bailey@birminghamal.gov by the end of Thursday, December 12th. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The North Pratt Neighborhood meeting will be held tonight at 6:00 PM at the New Haven Apartments. It's located at 13th Avenue W. And the Hooper City Neighborhood Association Christmas Social will be held on Thursday, December the 12th, at 6:00 PM at the Hooper City Recreation Center. I'm like, Pro Tem Alexander, we attended Cypico Finley's last Wednesday. We was at North Birmingham last night, so I gotta shout out to Mr. Coleman for cooking that chicken, because he is a grill master. And Ms. Sandra Brown, who prepared the sides, yellow rice and green beans and cake and all of that stuff. So I'm like, Pro Tem Alexander, can't be eating all this food. You're gonna be in the gym. The next weekly safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, January the 14th, at 1:00 PM. Please submit agenda items by email, no later than Wednesday, January the 8th, no later than 12:00 noon to the following recipients: Gregory Stanley at birminghamal.gov and Patrice Collins at birminghamal.gov. Also, on Saturday, the Pratt City 6 Neighborhoods will come together for their annual Christmas festival. And it starts at, it's from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. They're giving away toys, train rides, gifts. Special appearance will be from Santa at One Pratt Park, located at 601 Dugan Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama 35214. Also, Lament and Hope, Faith in Action, is kicking off their annual Lament and Hope celebration, honoring, you know, lifting up the lives of the people that have been lost to gun violence and, you know, just wrapping their arms around their families. So that's Saturday. The lineup starts at, I think, at 7:30 in WC at Patton Park, and then they'll go over to South Park Baptist Church for their service. And then also, if you get a chance to drop by, Fountain Heights with Ms. Lois Germany, and several of the judges that come together are gonna be giving away their annual Christmas celebration, giving away the free clothes. So she had a lot of, you know, clothes that they were giving away. So gently used clothing. So if you get a chance and drop by and put your head in. And also, we had an opportunity this morning to be with our vice president of Fountain Heights, which is Darlena Battles, and they're having their social, I believe, Sunday, Councilor President O'Gwen, at Hemmings. So it's at 2:00, I wanna say, because I don't have the information. So I'm just saying, so get a chance, come by Fountain Heights Social as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Woods.
Thank you, sir. A few quick announcements. Want to invite everybody out to join us for photos with Santa. We'll be at the Spring Bowl Road Library, having an open house. So a lot of activities, gonna be a fun time, but you can get your family photo with Santa, get your kids' family photo with Santa. If you just wanna get your photo with Santa, Santa is on duty. It's a night, 5:00 o'clock, so get there and definitely plug into that. I want to thank, thank all the neighborhood associations who have really been participating, going out, finding a way to serve in the community. Specifically, Kilo Springs went out this weekend, provided different items and things to support the residents of East Glen Nursing Home last week. Sun Valley and Roebuck Neighborhoods also hosted a holiday party for police and fire. So appreciative of neighborhoods that really try to find a way to be of impact, especially during the holidays. Also, gotta shout out Huffman Neighborhood had a good time at their Christmas gathering last night. Lot of fun games and things like that, and still walked away with my list of community items. And so we're on that, we're on that. Got to shout out Parker High School, man. Really, really proud, man. I don't think people, you know, have a good grasp for how hard it is to win a championship, specifically in football. And, you know, they really played well all season, really consistent, and went out there and got it done, man. So really excited about that. Got a lot of family that went to Parker, and so, you know, some of them even accused my granddad of hitting them with a paddle or something. But excited for them. And lastly, want to thank the NAACP here in Birmingham for recognizing me as a community trailblazer last week. Thank you, thank you, thank you. But yeah, I mean, very grateful. I think it's, as I get, is it older or was it, as I, as I, as I grow? Yeah, I have a better appreciation and a better ability to kind of stop and reflect. And so I am very grateful for that. And one little nugget I'll just throw and share is just, you know, be thankful. Like I said, at the end of the day, it's hard to focus on the problems and the things you need to be thankful for at the same time. And so I just want to encourage everybody, be grateful, be thankful as we speed towards the end of another year. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Woods. Words of wisdom. For District 5, I want to remind, as Mayor announced earlier, want to remind folks that Birmingham Police Academy is having their fitness and agility screening on December 14th at the Police Academy on Sixth Avenue South. And that physical agility test will be held at 8:00 AM. There is no registration. Just show up with valid identification. All right. And for the council, because we have a ARPA deadline looming for December 31st, and there are still some projects in queue that need to come before us for consideration, we need to know your availability for particularly the week of December 23rd. We've already, our council administration has already reached out to many of you, and it appears that we will be scheduling a council meeting for Monday, December 23rd. So unusual. I know some folks have already made travel plans, and so I get it, if you can't be here. But just be advised that if you are in town, it looks like we're, we'll be scheduling a meeting for Monday, December 23rd, at the normal time. And as to whether or not we will need to have a council meeting on December 31st, that's yet to be determined. So, again, this is because of the ARPA allocation deadline. So just be advised.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilor Abbott.
I heard a few moans in the crowd. You know, we're supposed to meet 52 weeks a year, and we asked people to put us in these positions. And if it was one of my projects that didn't get approved, I'd be madder than a wet hen, and each one of you would be too. So, you know, let's not moan so loud. We asked for this, and we've got to do it. I mean, five of us, I'll be here, but five of us need to show up to take care of our fellow council members who might not.
I think those were.
Yeah, but, but.
I think I might have heard what you heard, but I think it was just sounds of gratefulness.
Oh, sounds of gratefulness.
It was their stomachs, because they're hungry.
Might have been a little hurt.
Yeah, it's almost noon.
I misinterpreted those sounds. Well, I apologize.
Okay. Councilor Tate, did you?
Thank you, Mr. President. I did found a Lament and Hope 2024 for Faith in Action. It's the memorial ride, and it starts at 7:30. The lineup will begin at 7:30 at WC Patton Park, 1200 Sipsey Street, 35234. The procession will leave the park at 9:00 AM. And the life of celebration is South Park Baptist Church, 2341 Pearson Avenue Southwest, and that starts at 10:30. So this event will go rain or shine. So they're inviting elected officials, clergy, and it's to honor, celebrate the lives of those people that have been lost to gun violence.
All right. Thank you. Also, wanted to acknowledge the accomplishment of the A.H. Parker High School Thundering Herd Football Team. Yes, it was an exciting game. Saraland, you know, gave it their best, but Parker was just dominant. So we will. Ah, a Saraland pin. Wow. All right. So, again, as I mentioned earlier, when council, when Mayor Woodfin was making his announcements, we intend to have the Parker High School Football Team with us next Tuesday. To council central staff, please be advised that we, again, will have a full house and will need to make plans to, you know, accommodate, make some extra space to accommodate all the folks that we're likely to have here next week. Because in addition to Parker, we're gonna have some other school groups, I believe, too, for presentations. There's also, I don't have a lot of details on this, but there will be a gift-for-good holiday market that will take place on Saturday, December 14th, at 10, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Protective Stadium at the club entrance. Again, that's Saturday at the stadium, 10 to 3:00. Also, on, we're planning for the next Transportation Infrastructure Committee meeting. It actually also falls on Monday, December 23rd, at 2:00 PM. So at this, we do have a vacancy on the BJCTA Board of Directors that we need to, to address. So that's going to be the main agenda item for that meeting. Again, that's Monday, December 23rd, 2:00 PM. The Last Pepper Place Farmer's Market is this Saturday, will happen rain or shine, 7:00 AM to noon. And lastly, the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute will host a Kwanzaa Family Workshop on Saturday, December 21st, from 10:00 AM to noon. Registration is available at www.bcri.org. And with that, we do have public speakers. So Madam Clerk, can we call our first speaker?
The first speaker I have is Jackie Gordon. Jackie Gordon.
Okay, appears Miss, they're not in attendance, so Mr. Jenkins didn't make the sign-up list, but I'm gonna suspend the rules to allow him to come. So Willie Claus.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Ho, ho, ho! Santa Claus in the house.
I second that. I second.
I just want to let the city council know that Santa Claus will be at Pearson Baptist Church, Route 4314, Lexington Street in Brighton. And we had a banquet last Friday, and we had a wonderful time. The men appraised. And also, we gonna, we had a banquet. Also, I want y'all to come to my church. We got a new pastor, Oak Street Baptist Church. And I just want to let y'all know, I lost one of my good, good members, one of our souls is gone, or Robert Studderman from Oak Street Baptist Church. He was a legend at Oak Street for many years. And feeling gonna be at 12:00 o'clock Saturday at Oak Street at my church. And I want to let you know, everybody had a nice, we had a nice Thanksgiving. My family had a nice Thanksgiving, and my sister enjoying pretty good. She had, had to go to, got to go to the dentist Wednesday. I pray for her that everything be all right, you know. But Santa Claus been making it round. Like I said, I go in the rounds tonight. They having, we invited to Ramson High School tonight, to Santa Claus. Invite to Ramson. They having a little Christmas celebration. And Patton Park, Mr. Moore, I will, Santa Claus will be there on the 19th, Santa Claus Edition 4 at Patton Park. I will be there, and get my church reverend Patrick, Oak Street Baptist Church will come. And I'm, and then, I just want y'all to let you know, Ms. Smith, I lost one of my relatives. I didn't get no letter, but I would like to, one of my relative passed, some of my relative passed. And I let you know, wish y'all a merry Christmas. Also, my birthday coming up. I'll be 70 years old December 24th, City Council. 70 years old. And what I'm gonna do for my birthday, I'm gonna go out to demonstrate. All my family members or friends wanna go, go to, go to, celebrate my birthday, 70 years old. Another girlfriend of mine celebrate her birthday. I suppose we went to Georgia, but my classmate, her niece got sick, and I didn't make it. But I'm seven, I thank God, I'm 70 years old. I'm getting old, getting old up there, you know, getting old, old boy. I did go to the parade yesterday, downtown, to the parade yesterday. I went down, Santa Claus went there. I seen, went to the parade down. Yes, a lot of people down there to the parade. But I ask y'all to wish y'all ho, ho, ho! Merry Christmas. And it's true, we'll get some, Santa Claus will bring the light. Sure, when they slip in the bed, I was gonna say, jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle bell, jingle all the way. All the fun history right, and once we're so far safe. Say, jingle bell, jingle bell, jingles all the way. Ho, ho, fun history right, and I want the social say. I let say Merry Christmas, Collegeville District, for everybody, all the church, all over the world. Santa Claus has said Merry Christmas, and ho, 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 ho!
Appreciate you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Claus.
Mr. President, I just want to tell Mr. Jenkins, thank you. I know I got a chance to go over to Oak Street Baptist Church and spend time with the members over there. I need to get me some overalls so I can be in uniform next time I come through. But I appreciate you for who you are, always bringing light to this council chambers, always keeping us informed about, you know, different folks in our communities and people who, you know, pass away and who need to be honored and remembered. We really do appreciate you and everything that you do for our city. And I know that there are several people even online right now who are watching Facebook who appreciate you and your presence. And so I just want to tell you, thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Second that, second that. All right.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. One last thing, I did want to, you know, just put this out there, you know, since I'm talking to Mr. Jenkins, I have not seen Brusse. And so, I know, y'all probably like, don't call Brusse up here. Listen, I, I want to see Brusse, so, yeah.
Wait, wait, wait. Before we adjourn, I want to recognize our officers. Before we adjourn, I want to recognize our officers on duty. As always, we have Officer Pinkard, who's based here in City Hall. This morning, we also have Officer Jones and Officer Lawrence. Officer Jones is based at West Precinct, and Officer Lawrence is at East Precinct. Thank you for being with us this morning. Now, Council Williams. Second.
All in favor, let me know by saying aye. All opposed.
Happy holidays to you all on behalf of the Birmingham City Council. I've got all of my colleagues up here, and, you know, we work hard for you guys every day to make this a great city to live in, and this is an example of what we can all do together when we come together.
And this is one of those moments, I said, of where we collectively as a community can share in this moment, bringing the holidays as a community and city together. I want to wish every single one of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year on behalf of the very grateful administration and council. With that said, we're about to light this tree, so who's helping me with my countdown?
Oh, I got, I got the best person to help me with the countdown. Council Woods, daughter, please tell everybody your name, young lady. Chloe is going to give us the countdown, everybody. Chloe, are you ready? Chloe, are you ready?
Yes.
Let's do it. All right, we're gonna count down, everybody, from 10, and then we're gonna light the tree. Chloe, the 10 is on you. 10.
Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one.
Well, I'm just so excited. We just lit the Christmas tree for the city of Birmingham. We're surrounded by so many residents, my colleagues on the council, park board rep, and of course, Mayor Woodfin. Well, this is just such a wonderful time of year. I just want to say happy holidays to all of our families. I wish you a blessed and joyous holiday season.
The weather looks kind of iffy tonight, but everybody showed up, obviously, so really great time here tonight, and we got the tree lit, it's gonna be up through the holidays. Really wishing everyone in Birmingham a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Y'all, it's been a great year, let's get another one done.
And for more from the Birmingham City Council, follow along with us on social media, that's at City Council Bham. Happy holidays, Birmingham.
Has represented Birmingham City Council District One since 2019, but his heart for community and unrelenting service extends a lifetime.
And the courage to challenge ourselves to be better tomorrow than we were today.
I present to you our 2024 Community Trailblazer, Clinton Woods.
This is a great night for us to come together, focusing on a common cause, a common theme in, in coming together to make it become a reality, not only for a few, but for the masses. And as we continue to remember, to reflect, and to celebrate the things that we've accomplished, it also gives us an opportunity to dream about what we can achieve in the future.
I'm very, very appreciative, very thankful of this honor and award. You know, I'm at a place in life where I'm looking back, I'm, I'm more grateful for things, I'm more appreciative for things. I'm not constantly always forward charging, but I can take a moment and take a moment like this to reflect and be appreciative.
I'm just a small part of a lot of people working hard to make an impact, but appreciate the recognition and I'm honored to be here to support all of their efforts this year and as they continue to plan for the future.
As trailblazers forge ahead, they often inspire others to join the cause, creating a ripple effect that transforms entire community.